We'll call this meeting to order and start with the roll call.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Lowry.
Here.
At this time, please stand for the pledge of allegiance to invocation. All right, we're gonna start with the invocation. If everyone could just please join in bow on your heads. Father, we come before you to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to reside here in the city of Oceanside. We come together tonight to seek your guidance, wisdom, and discernment during the deliberations that transpire this evening, and in doing so, we lift up Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor Lowry, Councilmember Feller, Councilmember Sanchez, and Councilmember Kern. May you grant them wisdom and peace as they guide our city into bright and prosperous future. We say all these things in your precious name. Amen. At this time, remain standing for the Boy Scout Troop 649. You can come forward and lead us in the pledge.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They are the largest consolidated agency in the county. They represent all the cities plus the county offices, and we have interaction on, I'm a member of the board, we have interaction with state and federal agencies and also international agencies. And they're here to discuss a couple of items with us to review what's happened in the past year. So I want to welcome three people. One is our Sandag Chair, Mayor Terry Sonat, and he will be followed by with facts, not fiction, from the Chief Deputy Executive Director, Kim Kawada, and who is joined by Robin Wachner, who's also a senior government relations staff. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry, and Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. We are here, and we have, over the last month and a half, been making some extra efforts to go out to each of our agencies, each of our cities, and brief each of the councils as to what Sandag has been up to, both on a regional basis and also within your particular city, and offer an opportunity for you to ask questions and give us input as to things that we should be doing. And it's just a kind of a "how are we doing?" process and a chance to communicate with you. So what I'd like to do is show you a brief video, which will kind of summarize what the region efforts have been. We'd like to also show you some of our efforts within the city of Oceanside, what we're focused on in 2018 as an agency, and provide you an opportunity to dig into any questions you might have or give us input on how we're outreach to the communities. So, which do you want to do first? Okay, let's do the video first.
With the construction of highways, transit systems, railways, and bike and pedestrian networks, 2017 was a literal building year for the Sandag Board and its partner agencies. Revenue from our region's TransNet half-cent sales tax, leveraged with outside matching funds, continue to power dozens of projects throughout the region, as well as widespread environmental preservation efforts. These investments have taken place throughout the region, from Oceanside to South County, to the urban core, to suburban East County, providing travelers with more and more choices. The Mid Coast Trolley is the biggest transportation project ever undertaken in San Diego County. It will extend the Blue Line Trolley 11 miles from Old Town north, along the I-5 to UC San Diego and into University City. When the line and its nine new stations open in 2021, it is expected to attract 21,000 new transit riders a day. Being built in conjunction with the Mid Coast Trolley, when completed, the newly constructed Gilman Bridge will gracefully span I-5 just north of the La Jolla Village Drive interchange. The project, which broke ground in 2017, will provide a much-needed connection between Gilman Drive on UC San Diego's West Campus and Medical Center Drive on the East Campus. Build NCC is an all-encompassing project that includes highway, rail, environmental, and coastal access improvements for cities of Encinitas and Solana Beach and the North Coast Corridor. Work also broke ground this year on a comprehensive $102 million effort to restore the lagoon itself. The replacement of the rail bridges over the lagoon are happening simultaneously in order to minimize impacts on the sensitive environment in that area.
We get to work integratively with the rail and the freeway work, and that integration is through our partnerships with Caltrans and Sandag. It's not often that an environmental organization gets to really sit at the table with the people planning and designing and actually implementing transportation. And we were able to give recommendations on what we think needed to change in the corridor to allow the system to be more natural, and they took that advice and they're implementing it.
Many other important additions to the transportation system have made major progress during 2017. Progress continued on the South Bay Rapid Project. From the O'Tai Mesa border, passengers will be able to travel through O'Tai Ranch on a dedicated guideway into eastern Chula Vista. The Rapid Buses will be able to use a new direct access ramp recently added to Interstate 805 and connect to downtown San Diego. This dedicated guideway through eastern Chula Vista will be the first of its kind in the region, allowing the Rapid Service to avoid traffic snarls on busy arterial streets.
We're at the Heritage Station as part of the South Bay Rapid Route, and from here you have easy access to downtown and the border. This particular station is located adjacent to restaurants, doctor's offices, and pretty much anything you would need. It's situated at the heart of the community.
The two new centerline transit stations at University Avenue and El Cajon Boulevard will allow Rapid Service along Interstate 15 to quickly stop, pick up passengers, and continue back onto the active freeway lanes, avoiding the freeway ramps and the hassles of surface street traffic.
These are the first freeway-level transit station platforms in San Diego County.
These stations opened in the first quarter of 2018. Work continued at multiple locations along the Coastal Rail Corridor, known as LoSan. In partnership with the North County Transit District, the Oceanside Transit Center was expanded to increase the number of trains that can board passengers simultaneously and to allow freight trains to pass through. The $28.1 million upgrade made the station more efficient by adding a third track and an additional platform for the roughly $1.2 million passengers that use the station every year. Work also continued on the Elvira to Morena double-track project. This segment will add a 2.6-mile second track from State Route 52 to just south of Balboa Avenue. When linked to double-track segments on either end of the project, the result will be a continuous 10.3-mile stretch of double-track to improve passenger and freight operations in the corridor. The Sandag Active Transportation Program also achieved some important new milestones in 2017, including the opening of the State Route 15 commuter bikeway. The approximately one-mile bikeway links the mid-city communities of Kensington-Talmage, Normal Heights, and City Heights with the Mission Valley Community, running along I-15 but safely separated from vehicle traffic. A one-mile segment of the inland rail trail in the city of San Marcos was completed in February 2017. This segment is part of a 21-mile bikeway that will connect from Oceanside to Escondido. Progress continued on the Bay Shore Bikeway, which will eventually extend 24 miles all the way around San Diego Bay. Relief is on the way for one of the urban core's most frustrating bottlenecks. Work advanced dramatically on the Genesee Avenue interchange over the last year, with a new widened 10-lane bridge and more efficient on-and-off ramps expected to open in 2018. The effort to create a third border crossing in the region in east O'Tai Mesa also received a big boost. The state of California awarded the State Route 11 project $45 million to help pay for the acquisition of property where the new border crossing will eventually sit. We wished the South Bay Expressway a happy 10th birthday in 2017. Sandag acquired the rights to operate the tollway about six years ago. The Sandag Board immediately cut the tolls on the facility to relieve congestion in eastern Chula Vista and draw traffic away from the I-805. The Sandag I Commute Program worked hard to achieve its mission of reducing traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions by promoting alternative means of transportation. Successes during 2017 included the region's busiest-ever Bike-to-Work Day, with more than 10,000 bike commuters visiting one of more than 100 pit stops throughout the region. I Commute partnered with Uber to expand the I Commute Guaranteed Ride Home Program, offering free rides to alternative commuters facing an urgent need to get home. I Commute also partnered with Waze Carpool, who is subsidizing up to $50,000 for carpooling to the highest employment areas in the region. In early January 2017, the U.S. Department of Transportation selected the San Diego region as one of the 10 designated proving grounds in the nation to encourage testing and sharing information around autonomous connected-vehicle technologies. Sandag, the city of Chula Vista, and Caltrans District 11 teamed up to seek the Proving Ground designation.
The Proving Ground gives our policymakers and the public an opportunity to engage in how this technology is ultimately shaped as it comes into the marketplace.
It's been an amazing year. Stay tuned, there's more to come in 2018.
Well, that is intended to highlight our regional kind of projects that we've been able to implement in 2017. In order to do that, of course, we need an active board that comes to good consensus, and I want to thank Deputy Mayor Lowry, Councilmembers Kern and Councilmember Feller for their active participation. Jack is on the Borders Committee, and we really appreciate that. Let's start with, we will have a handout, I think you may have already received it, but on this handout from, capsulizes the city of Oceanside, we have a map that I think highlights the entire focus of Sandag, which is a regional planning and transportation agency. This map shows how your citizens travel in and out of the city of Oceanside, what routes they take, what's the volume, the thicker lines represent a higher volume, and it just, I think, illustrates how interconnected all our cities are, and for every city in San Diego, we have the same kind of map. It just shows cobwebs or routes of going in all directions, and it shows that in order for us to improve our transportation systems, we have to work together to come up with regional solutions. Next one. Okay, so, these are the items that the video highlighted. These are kind of issues, whether it's trains, rail, buses, active transportation, they're all variety of kind of projects that we're working on throughout San Diego. I like to highlight the North County, the North Coast Corridor project because it represents not only a freeway project, it represents a rail project to double-track the rail and to restore the lagoon at the same time. This is really the first time that we've been able to put a package together that was a combination of projects and get approval from the Coastal Commission, so we're really proud of the North Coast Corridor project. Next slide. Let's focus on Oceanside for a minute. You know, we have a TransNet sales tax that helps us leverage our projects, and you benefit as a city, fiscal year '17 was roughly $4.5 million. Up to date, you've received roughly $35.8 million that have come into your city. We opened the Oceanside Transit Center, which we're very proud of. We continue to work on the North Coast Corridor in the Manchester area, and we're working our way north toward you. We have Phase II of the inland rail trail under construction. We awarded the Seagate Drive Prospect Grant. Our climate action plan has, we've been able to help all our cities and your city as well. We completed the draft project study report for SR 78, and I would like to say that the Board thinks 78 is a very high priority. And we've completed the Buena Vista Lagoon Enhancement, EIR. I'd also like to mention that last Friday, we selected a new executive director to head up our Sandag organization. The gentleman is Hassan Akrata, who is formerly the Executive Director of SCAG, or the Southern California Association of Governments, which is a very large Los Angeles equivalent to Sandag but a much larger scale. We've been able to recruit him down to San Diego. He has a great deal of experience in bringing cities together and reaching consensus on issues. He's a visionary, and he's, I think, very excited about the new technologies that are coming into transportation. So I think he will be a great asset, teaming up with Kim and the rest of the staff, and we're gonna have a real dynamic organization. He begins December 3rd. In 2017, we received a lot of input from a lot of different folks regarding, hey, Sandag, you could do a little better job in this area, or you could do a little better job in your forecasting, or your communications, your transparency, various things internally. And so we've taken all that input, and we've wrapped it up in a Plan of Excellence, where we're working on eight areas within the agency to make continuous improvement. One of the first things we've been able to do is create an independent audit group, and we will have an independent performance auditor that will be coming onboard that can give us input on how our processes are going. And one of the things we're trying to do is do better communication with our stakeholders, and this is example of why we're here tonight, is to increase that dialogue. So that's internally. For 2018, we have a series of things that we're emphasizing. We have an awful lot going on in our capital construction, and you can see the dollars there. In blue, I wanted to highlight that every four years, we do a new regional plan for transportation. We call it the San Diego Forward Plan, 2019 to 2050. This is an opportunity to really hear from all constituents throughout San Diego to see what are the priorities on transportation, what they want to see us emphasize and make improvements in. And at the last board meeting, we even extended the time to reach out to stakeholders to get even more input as to what are everybody's priorities so that we can come up with the scenarios necessary to plan our future. We're also into a thing called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, oftentimes called RENA. This is where the state of California provides us with a forecast of what our population and housing needs are going to be, and we, as an agency, sit down with the 18 cities and the county, and we try to figure out how we can allocate as goals for housing to each city a fair appropriation of those targets or those goals. We've just begun that process. We just talked about it at the border, where we're going to make sure that we look at all the priorities of various cities and come to a reasonable process. It's gonna go into 2019 for sure. It'll take a period of time to process those numbers and get people onboard. It's oftentimes controversial, but we hope to be making it as smooth as possible. And finally, we'll just say that we're trying to outreach as best we can, and we would ask for your recommendations or any things you'd like us to do to reach out to your constituents. If you individually would like to tour any of our construction areas, we'd be more than happy to show you around. It's always nice to see those things put together in pieces. It's very impressive, and we encourage your involvement in the regional planning process because it's very, very important. And now we'll just open it up to any questions. I have Kim and Robin here to answer those questions because I can't probably answer them myself.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I know Sandag has had its time in the spotlight, starting with Prop A and the controversy going into Prop A and some promises not, some groups feeling that promises were not met with respect to doing some of the public transportation, to include more public transportation projects within Prop A. And then after Prop A losing, that, you know, the really bad forecast, you know, under, basically saying that there were multi, what is it, billions of dollars that were projected to have been, to be raised by the first half-cent sales tax. So we're looking at, you know, really not really completing all of the projects from the first half-cent sales tax, and really the second one that didn't pass in November 2016, really having looked at that as pretty much just trying to support the first half-cent sales tax. And then I think there were some concerns about, I think, most recently, the bike delays. Sandag back in the spotlight with, I think, Colin Parent, basically from Circulate San Diego, really upset that several projects will be so delayed that only, was it one, will be done by the end of fiscal year 2019. So now that Assemblymember Loren Gonzalez has, you know, brought forward a new structure for Sandag, and now that we have a new executive director, you've mentioned that you want to do more in terms of, I think, cleaning up the image for Sandag. For Oceanside, I think we still have problems with Sandag in terms of the kind of outreach that was done for the I-5, excuse me, the I-578 interchange. There's still a lot of folks in South Oceanside that are very upset at how Sandag is perceived as really just having the meeting really with no intention of following through on any of the requests by the community. So how do you see that? It's a long introduction there, because it is. We're coming from a really bad reputation for Sandag and having some changes, hopefully for the better, but how do you deal with, for example, in Oceanside, coming together with the community, Sandag being this huge, you know, seen as this huge organization, coming to Oceanside and doing a better job?
Well, let me try to respond. First of all, I want to say that I think Sandag as an organization is a very strong, populated by a lot of good people, a lot of good professional people. And what we ran into in 2017 is the controversy that I think will be with us for quite a while, and that is how do we use resources? How do we set our priorities as a region? How do we communicate better? How do we respond to different groups who have, you know, different priorities? So we're, I think, a successful organization that always needs to improve. We are always trying to improve. And I think 2017 was a learning year for us. It was, it's been a great opportunity for us to hear from everybody, get the criticism that comes from various sources, but as you see, we're doing an awful lot of good things at the same time.
Right.
So it's important that we listen to people and identify where we can improve. And so when we talk about forecasts, we're making a lot of changes to make sure that there are new sets of eyes on our forecast so we get criticism and third-party evaluation of the bike lanes where, it turns out that the bike projects are just as complicated as some of our freeways because of where you're having to build them. But we're moving ahead with a lot of them, and there are a lot coming. So there's a lot of planning and preparation, but we're moving forward on those. As far as AB 805 is concerned, that was the legislation that was recently passed that changed our voting structure. It is something we've implemented, and it seems to be working fine. There's nothing to hurt us in any way. And as we develop this regional plan, it's important that we listen to all the various people because in San Diego, you know, you've got a transit priority, you know, we need to do a better job in moving people from jobs to homes and back and forth, but we also have a freeway contingent of people that need to move on their freeways better. We have active transportation folks who want to move using bikes and other modes. We have new technologies coming down the line that are gonna change it. So it's always a state of listening to people, and the last thing I'd say is if the Highway 78 interchange issue, we want to be able to partner with you as the city and come into an area and listen to people, and we both listen to and set priorities, and we want to follow up with all the issues that are raised.
One of the comments made by Colin Parent was, at the end of the day, and this is from May of this year, "At the end of the day, the responsibility lies with the elected members of the Sandag Board to direct staff on how to execute safety projects. Staff needs to hear from board members that delivering projects to improve bicycle safety is a higher priority than spending enormous amounts of time and money trying to reach an elusive consensus." So how are you doing, how did you respond to that, and what do you see that Sandag will be doing differently to, for example, not delay so many bike projects in just the recent forecasts?
I'll let Kim answer that, and I'll also add on to that a little bit.
Let me talk specifically about the bike program. The Board adopted a really ambitious early-action bike program, investing $200 million in a number of bikes. You saw in the video improvements we've been making in action Oceanside. We've opened portions of the Coastal Rail Trail in the city. We're working on an inland rail trail along the 78 corridor that parallels the Sprinter. We did have some issues with the bike program, so we fully accept that. Actually, last year, we got a Golden Fleece Award, I think, just the fact that a number of the projects were delayed, so we understand that we own it. We've taken a look at that. There's two things I think we've learned from. One is the fact that, as our Chair mentioned, doing these projects, while simple from a sort of a capital development, you're seeing kind of the big public works we're able to do with building a new trolley line. From a capital perspective, as engineers, you know, I think they're relatively simple projects in that way. From a community perspective, as we're going through urban streets and trying to build infrastructure, improve safety for bikes, and keep vehicles and buses moving, it's been challenging from that respect. So we're trying to balance listening to the community members, making changes to the design. The other thing that we found is of that $200 million, about three-quarters of that is actually invested within the city of San Diego, and some of our challenges were we weren't getting through the development review process as quickly as we thought. So some of it is on us, and we take full responsibilities. I think our schedules, because we were so excited, were a little bit ambitious. On the city side, I personally got involved, speaking with members of the mayor's staff and the folks, and they've put point persons on, sort of like, folks to help us along the way to really make it through their system. They're a very large organization, and so the mayor's team and the city council members who are very, are champions, like Councilmember Gomez, for example, have really helped us get through the logjam of some of their development services. some of their Development Services Department and their DSD review process. So we're learning from our passing, and I'm really excited because actually, you're going to see more as we're getting these things through the project development process. The construction part will be, I think, a lot easier and a lot more smoother.
Well, definitely our coastal bike trail can use some, looking at, it's, what, delayed, been, what, 15 years or so? So there's one segment that we'd really love to have.
I would also highlight what you mentioned, the issue of safety along the corridor. We've been involved with the cities up and down the coast, and we've, that seems to be something that with NCTD, we're going to have to solve on a regional basis. Each city is doing separate issues or separate projects, but safety and how we get our population that's on the east of the railroad to the ocean on the west is something that we all have to be concerned with. And I think we can have a bigger voice in Sacramento with the PUC and along the route, if we can work together as a group of cities, and Sandag stands ready to help in that process.
Right. Well, I think the only, the last thing I want to mention here is that one of the things that we, that I had hoped that the Sprinter would address is truly that it would include additional bus routes so that it could get to definite places. Like Sprinter was done on an existing rail, so it didn't go to, for example, the hospital. It didn't go to the shopping center. It didn't go to the County Administration Center where we have Courthouse, where a lot of people go to work and to court. So I was hoping that there would be some kind of a system developed that would, in some way, figure out how it would be, cost the least amount, but actually get people to where they need to get to. One of the judges, I remember, used to say, "Yeah, if I took the bus from Escondido to the courthouse, it would take me two hours." So those things still exist, those kind of...
And that's a continuing issue on all our transit systems, is to not only build the backbone of the system, but also to get that last mile from wherever the station is to where people want to go to for work or whatever. So that needs development as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry?
I want to thank you for that brief overview. And I think that the issues that you've brought forward are just snapshots of what is really going on. When you talked about the regional housing needs assessment, RENA, that's a state sort of number, I'll call it an edict, and they tell us what kind of housing numbers we have to deal with. So can you tell me briefly, you don't have to go into all kinds of out-in-the-weeds kind of detail, but what does that mean to the city of Oceanside?
So that's a great question. It's a really important thing that we're going through right now. And you're correct, Deputy Mayor Lowry, the state basically gives each region a number that they have to accommodate, they have to plan for. So our number for the next eight years will be, it's 171,000 units. And what that means is, the 18 cities in the county have to find or plan for 171,000 new housing units. Well, the good news is, your general plans collectively actually have that capacity. So the general plans in the 18 cities and counties already planned for 370,000. So the plans are already there, and it really is a matter of, okay, how does Sandag then work with your communities and figure out what's the fair share that each of the 18 cities in the county should receive for this housing element cycle? So it's going to be a partnership. It's going to be some give and take. One of the things the Board did last year, last time that they worked on the RENA, is they really looked towards every, you know, local general plans to see where cities in the county were already planning for growth. And they also looked at where the transportation infrastructure was. So where we have good public transit, good rail systems, and how you can maybe better connect housing with public transit. And so that's one thing, an approach they did last time. And so the Board, I think, in considering this next housing element cycle, are going to be weighing these things on what's the fair share, what's not. Some of the larger cities, actually, last time, like the city of San Diego, actually took more than their typical population share. And I think that there's an opportunity there because when you look at where jobs are concentrated in the region, there's definitely some job corridors up here in North County, along the Palomar Airport Road, along 78. But the largest employment centers reside in the city of San Diego. And so there's, I think, opportunity to connect jobs and housing in a, you know, a more tight fashion and stuff. So last time, the city did end up taking a larger share of the region share, just because of things like that, that they have a large employment base.
So another question that's related to that, because Sandag is seriously involved primarily in transportation. At last Friday's Board meeting, we agreed to grant an extension to the regional transportation plan preparation. And we had at least eight different organizations speak to us, and all of them were in favor of it, including housing rights, nonprofits, and transportation nonprofits. And the Chamber of Commerce was even in favor of the extension. Can you just give me a brief statement about why they would favor the extension? I don't really want to talk about something that you didn't like or that they didn't like because they were really promoting making it better rather than complaining about what happened in the past.
Yeah, I think with all our communities and stakeholders, we all share the same goal of making sure our next regional plan is the best that it can be, that it has a vision that everyone, that meets the transportation needs for everyone. And so what the community asked us to do is really asked the Board to do, and under Terry's leadership, the Board took that action, it was to allow some additional time for plan preparation. So as our scenarios go out there and we get public, it was really to allow for more public input, more back and forth, to let the teams, the technical teams, work on the different network scenarios, and do sort of another round of outreach. Like, we did some early outreach in the spring, and we really want to bring that out to the community, to your communities, the communities all around the San Diego County region. And so really, that was the essence of it, to, you know, allow the team to work more closely with the communities.
Yeah, I went to three of those outreach events that were up here in North County just to observe what was going on. I know that Chair Sonat did at least one of them that I saw him at. Those were very valuable to me as a Board member because I got to see what people in the real world, in today's world, needed as far as transportation was concerned, whether that was by car, or bus, or bicycle, or rail. So when we talked at those meetings, and I expect to be invited to all the future ones because they're pretty important to me as an individual, one of the things that I realized was that we are looking now, this is a future situation, with the revocation of SB 1 funds in the November election. So there's a Proposition 6 on the ballot. And if Proposition 6 passes, according to what you just presented us, that was $1 billion we got from that? Is that just in the last, like, eight months or something?
No, the $1 billion that the region stands to lose, yeah, $1 billion, stands to lose, really is, Prop 6 hasn't been only, or SB 1 has only been in operation for about a year and a half. It got voted in and approved in April of last year. So of that $1 billion, the lion's share is going to Caltrans to repair bridges, pavement, drainage, culverts. Each of the 18 cities and counties are receiving a share of that. I think Oceanside is actually using it on a lot of pavement and asphalt improvements, really fixing potholes and the like. So, and for Sandag, one of the big things, working with our partners at MTS, North County Transit District and Caltrans, some of these big mega projects that you saw in the video, the improvements to the North Coast Corridor, to double-track the rail, to add carpool lanes to Interstate 5, to provide new pedestrian crossings and bike crossings along the freeway corridor, and to improve our sort of environmental gems, these coastal lagoons, those are incredibly important dollars. The Sandag Board has not taken a position on Proposition 6, which would repeal the gas tax. But what it has done is, it really has asked the team to really go out and in venues like this and others, just explain to folks, you know, what it is and what kinds of programs and projects it's funding. So folks, when they go to the ballot booth and vote in November, they can do that, you know, with education and information behind them.
Yeah, it's been an interesting sort of campaign that's going on now because we have so many issues, so many balls in the air as far as the government is concerned. And I'm out canvassing for myself, knocking on voters' doors because I'm up for reelection. And they ask me, I tell them, I'm on the Board of Sandag, and they say, "What is that?" And I explain it to them. And I say, "Currently, the budget is $900 million that we're spending this year." And you can see it on every freeway project, all the rail expansion that we're doing. Anything that's going on is going through Sandag. So the money that's coming in there, it doesn't look like it's being squirreled away or burned on forest fires, but it's actually looking like we're doing something with that money. So kudos to you and the rest of your staff at Sandag for taking a hard look at what's going on and involving the community in educating us. And so it makes us easy, it makes it easier for us as elected representatives to give the community the information they need. So thank you for doing this today also.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. I'm a little frauded. I went camping in the redwoods last week. So both of my constituents I talked to, they couldn't care less about bicycles. They're worried about the commute. In fact, they tell me, "Not one more foot of bike path until their freeways are done." You know, the idea that they pay the gas tax, put in their cars, they don't want that money spent for bicycles. They want to improve their commute. It seems like all the work that's done is on the south end of I-5, that it takes forever to get to the north end up in this. Their question to me, it says, "When is the 78-I-5 interchange going to be done?" And it just seems like a very nebulous timeline. So I really don't know. So you can tell the constituents at home on television when they can expect that to be done. I think that would be worth this presentation today. So thank you.
Yeah, I don't have the date with me, but I can go back and let you know what we have in our current plan. But what's important now is actually, we're updating, the Board is updating the new regional plan. So I think your constituents really need to get engaged and, you know, ensure that that continues to be a high priority. You are right. We are working on the North Coast Corridor and Caltrans, with Caltrans and our partners, and going from the south to the north. So that, it is taking time right now. So the work that's underway in Encinitas, SB 1's provided another, you know, roughly more than $200 million. We'll be breaking ground and making improvements on Interstate 5, for example, all the way to Carlsbad. And then the work north of Carlsbad is really would be underdesigned for the next phase. So it is something that's on our radar and is important to us. We want to make sure these improvements to the 578, to the 78 itself, to I-5 in general, are done and completed because that's what people are asking for. They're looking for options and they're looking for ways to get to work and school more quickly and more efficiently.
Well, and the concern is that we don't have any money to finish the north end. You know, people's buying habits are changing. We don't get as much sales tax as we did in the past because of online shopping. So their big question is, by the time it gets up to Carlsbad and Oceanside, there's no money left to spend on it. So that's a big concern of theirs, to make sure that that does happen.
I would just highlight that 78 is one of the major issues that's facing the Board and Sandag as a whole. It's something that we've promised in the future. And with SB 1 and the funding that we do, we're always in the process of preparing projects and then going out and seeking funding for those projects. And so as money comes in, we can either speed up, or if money does not come in, we slow down. And it's a kind of an accordion process that we do. But we are making progress, and we intend to move all the way up. We did this, we have, I'd say, one of our strongest constituents on the Board are the series of North County cities that are along the 78. And they have told us very strongly that this has got to get moving. So we hear you.
Well, thank you very much, and appreciate you taking the time to give us that overview.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. Closed session report. The Council met in, excuse me, closed session to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator involving MECO and the OFMA. Also, Council met on Item 2, conference with legal counsel on pending litigation in the matter, orders compensation case number ADJ 10847334, Mark Cal versus City. Item 2A1, the Strackey matter was removed from the agenda. Council also met on Item 3, conference with rural property negotiator involving the vacant land located on Vista Way near Lyle Street, negotiating party City of Oceanside and Pacific Group under negotiations or price and terms for the sale of the property. Those three items were discussed, but there's no reportable action on, at this time.
I keep frogging my throat, too. It's contagious.
Consent calendar?
Yes, consent calendar. Item number nine has been removed from the agenda.
Move approval for balance.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I need to recuse myself on Item number 12.
Was there also recusal for Item number 3? Or not?
Three.
That was on the record, right?
It's in the minutes, yes. It's already recorded in the minutes, yes.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0 with a recusal on Item number 12 by Deputy Mayor Lowry. Yes, next, Item number 15 is appointment of one individual to serve on the Citizen Investment Oversight Committee.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, it's my pleasure to nominate pursuant to our investment policy, Section 6, nominate a new member to our Citizen Investment Oversight Committee. I'm nominating Dr. Amy Ramos. Dr. Ramos is a professor at Grossmont College. She brings many years of experience analyzing statistics and data, and I'm very excited to nominate her for this important oversight role.
No public on this item.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
She wasn't here.
Yes, we have items off of the agenda. First, Kathy Kinnon.
All right, Kathy. Good evening, Mayor Weiss and City Councilmembers. We're excited to be here tonight and let you know that you have eight weeks to train and get in shape for the Turkey Trot. That's why I came here. And I have a little video. I have to warn you, the sound is really low on this. It's our 84-year-old spokesperson, Ann Garrett, and she did a personal invitation for you.
My name is Ann. And I'm an Oceanside resident. I'm 84, and I'm here to invite you to join us in the Oceanside Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. This is an annual event. It's been going for 12 years, and this will be our 13th year. The Pacific Marine Credit Union sponsors this, and it's one of the fun ways to start your Thanksgiving. What better way is there than to move your feet before you eat? And that way, you can eat as much as you like, Thanksgiving dinner, and you don't have to feel guilty. There's a race for everyone. There's a 10K, there's a 5K, there's also lots of children's races. Listen to this. This is what I like the best. They have a race, especially for people like me, oldies. Although they're not really oldies, but anyway. 65 and under, and you can run or you can walk. You can even walk with a walker if you want. And it's just a wonderful way to participate with your family. You all get medals, whether you win or whether you don't. You just have to finish, and you get a medal. And it's just such a wonderful way to be together as a family and spend Thanksgiving together. I hope to see you there on Thanksgiving morning with your family. I have done a 10K with my daughter once. I did a 5K immediately afterwards with my granddaughter. My grandson, who's six feet three and a lot taller than me, has run with me. And there's nothing more fun than doing things with your family. You don't have to stand and applaud anymore, you oldies. You just get out there and do your own race. So I hope to see you there on Thanksgiving morning. You have a wonderful time, and I know you will enjoy it and come back next year for more. Okay? Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Is it upside down? So those of you that are planning to attend, I just wanted you to know that this eight-week training program is free on our website. You can download it. And if you'd like to, we also have a little free-running group that's here at the Civic Center every Tuesday and Thursday. And we kind of specialize in getting people to go from walking to jogging to running. And everybody's welcome. And we look forward to seeing everybody at the Trot. Thank you very much.
Our next two speakers are...
Just a second. Kathy, if you want to sign up, is there a website they should go to?
Yes, osideturkeytrot.com. And you can sign up now. And we have a special deal for groups of three to five, where we give them a little discount. And the proceeds go to the schools and nonprofits that serve Oceanside residents. And we're looking forward to having... looking forward to having a good turnout. This year, our Move Your Feet Foundation is focusing on a new program called Miles of Smiles, where we're encouraging students to run at least a mile every day, so they have a big smile on their face when they go in the classroom, and they're able to relax and concentrate. Website, osideturkeytrot.com. Thanks, Jerry.
Our next two speakers are Kevin O'Keefe and Dennis Martnik.
Good evening, my name is Kevin O'Keefe, and I am representing the California Surf Museum. Sharks and microphones are the greatest fear of my life, I'm in front of one of them right now, so bear with me. The California Surf Museum would like to thank Mayor Peter Weiss, Vice, Deputy Mayor Chuck Lowry, Councilmember Jerry Kern, Esther Sanchez, Jack Feller, and all Oceanside residents for your support of the museum. I would also like to give a shout-out to Patrick Young specifically, and Tila Carter in Oceanside Special Events and Traffic Departments for assistance in direction and preparation of our museum promotional exhibitions. Excuse me. Canton, Ohio has its Football Hall of Fame, and Oceanside has its own unique attraction, the California Surf Museum. Our mission statement, the California Surf Museum serves an international repository and resource center on the lifestyle sport of surfing by capturing and preserving its art, culture, and heritage for the education and enjoyment of current and future generations. The museum is the second-largest tourism draw in Oceanside, by our estimate, over 650,000 visitors have toured the museum. Numerous tours are conducted throughout the year, consisting of tourists, retired, adaptive, and student groups. We have a five-star rating with TripAdvisor as an example. We wandered into the California Surf Museum today and were pleasantly surprised to find such a well-done exhibit. If you are in Oceanside and have an hour to spare, check it out, you will not be disappointed. The California Surf Museum sends out email communications to over 5,000 people promoting the museum and therefore, Oceanside. Our social media followers top over 20,000 people, our website averages over 6,000 visitors per month. Our extensive reach into the U.S. and foreign countries help promote the "Visit Oceanside" motto. The California Surf Museum was established in 1986 and moved to Oceanside in 1991. We have been in three locations in Oceanside. In 2009, with the assistance from the city, we moved to our current location at 312 Pureview Way. Over its 32 history, the museum has featured over 50 major exhibits. Our most recent and current exhibits are Heating Powers of Surfing During the Vietnam Conflict, The Masters of the Famous Banzi Pipeline, Surfboard Timeline Display, which features surf craft from beginning to present day, Exhibits in Current Construction, Adaptive Surfing, Ocean Ecology, Youth Education, How Waves Were Made, and the Ocean Elements, et cetera. The museum has a significant collection of over 200 surfboards, ranging from early Hawaiian solid wood models to modern-day craft with 3,000 additional archive items. The California Surf Museum is one of the special jewels that Oceanside has to promote tourism in the community. The sport of surfing is about passion and stoke, and that's what we impart to our visitors. The reason for standing in front of you tonight is to thank the Oceanside City Council, city employees, and especially all the Oceanside residents for their support of the California Surf Museum, and to invite all of you to visit us regularly and to enjoy one of the city's finest assets. Thank you, mahalo and aloha.
Here, could I just say something?
Don't you have something going on right now?
Pardon me?
Don't you have something going on right now at the Surf Museum?
Yeah, actually, tonight, we're having the viewing of the portions of how the Big Wednesday movie was produced, made, filmed, and then also doing a video right today, tonight, of never shown before footage in the production of some of these surf films. So, we've brought, actually, there was three couples flying in from New Jersey today to catch that event, so it's quite a drive for the city of Oceanside.
Councilmember Feller?
I just wanted to mention, aren't you glad it's not the Playgirl Club anymore?
Well, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Dennis Martnik.
Dennis Martnik, supporter of the SOAR initiative, which is also known as Measure Y. Measure Y, the SOAR initiative, stands for Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources. It's efforts of grassroots group to preserve open space, which includes parks, also habitat area, bodies of water, and river trails. And it also attempts to preserve agriculture. The vast majority of farmers in the area where I live support Measure Y. We want to save the farms, we want to continue engaged in agriculture. There are two large landowners who are more interested in moving on, they want to be able to sell their land to developers of high-density housing. We, the vast majority of us oppose that, and that's why we're supporting Measure Y. The argument the other side is using is that their land would be devalued as a result of this SOAR initiative. It's not true. What you have in front of you is a study, the results of a study are the chart of a study that's done by a very well-known group of appraisers of agricultural land. It shows you that in Ventura County, since 1993, when they had their first SOAR initiative, the value of agricultural land in Ventura County has far exceeded the other jurisdictions in Region 6 of the state. So, the basis for the Lynn Reiser study, the assumption made, was that property values would fall. That has not happened, and that will not happen. That study is, has reached false conclusions as a result of that erroneous assumption. So, again, look closely at that chart, and you'll see that a SOAR initiative has positive impacts on agricultural land. Farmers will still be able to use that land for collateral. All Measure Y does is give voters the chance and the opportunity to approve development on land that is owned, agriculture or open space. Thank you. We're asking people to vote yes on Measure Y.
No further public on this item.
Mr. Mullin?
Item 19 is an adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, amending Chapter 32B of the Oceanside City Code by the addition of subsection 32B, Section 7E, to establish a Development Impact Feed Deferral Program.
No public on this item.
We have a motion. Another second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Are there any council member items? And then, we'll wait one minute.
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, for the public here, we have to wait until 6 o'clock to hear our next item, Yeah, item number 16 is adoption of resolutions approving the amendment to the local conflict of interest codes for the city of Oceanside, Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District, and Oceanside Community Development Commission.
We'll open this public hearing and start with disclosures.
Just staff.
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 No contact.
All material has been provided to the council.
You're pointing. Aren't you going to go up there? No, I'm going to do it right here. Sorry. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, the item before you is the adoption of three resolutions updating the city's local conflict of interest code. This is required by the Political Reform Act. Government Code, Section 87306.5, requires each local agency to review its local conflict of interest code in even-numbered years, and to make such amendments as may be necessary as a result of that review. The local conflict of interest code has to reflect the current structure of the organization, and it has to identify those officials, employees, who should be filing statements of economic interest, otherwise known as the Form 700. A local conflict of interest code tells the public officials, government employees, and consultants what specific financial interests they must also disclose on those Form 700s. My office, along with support from the Human Resources Department, has conducted the required review, and we have updated the appendix to the local code. We've updated the new positions within the organizations. This includes three new positions, the IT Security Officer, Budget Manager, and Code Enforcement Manager, that have been created in the last two years, and we've identified the disclosure categories that apply to each of those positions. So, with that, unless there's any questions, I would recommend that the council, CDC, and Harbor Board adopt the accompanying resolutions.
This is a public hearing item, any members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item, they come forward this time. Mayor, I see none.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Do I close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing. Councilmember Sanchez?
Move adoption.
Councilmember Kern?
One second. Thank you.
Please vote.
Could have looked at his face.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And with that, we will stand adjourned until 3:30 Wednesday, October 3.